Big news! Wayfair's end-of-season sale is here. It's Wayfair's Labor Day clearance. Right now, you can score up to seventy percent off everything home at Wayfair, plus amazing doorbuster deals and 24-hour surprise flash deals on home finds in every style. This is your last chance to score end-of-season savings, and it's happening now. Did we mention fast shipping on everything? Don't we? Head to wayfair.com today to score up to seventy percent off now through September 2nd.
America's Town Meeting of the Air. Town meeting tonight, town meeting tonight. Will the unions promote recovery? Town meeting tonight, town meeting tonight. Again, historic Town Hall, just off Times Square in New York City, throws open wide its doors for America's Town Meeting of the Air, for the 23rd in a series of regular Thursday evening meetings, presented under the auspices of the League for Political Education, which has been conducting a program on nonpartisan political education for nearly half a century. The League and the National Broadcasting Company join hands in making one of these programs available for the people of America each week. Tonight, the question is: Will unionization promote industrial recovery? I now present our moderator, Mr. George V. Denny Jr., founder and director of America's Town Meeting of the Air. Mr. Denny.
Good evening, neighbors. Once more, the question of unionization assumes a position of foremost importance in the news of the country. Should we have craft or industrial unions? Should the company unions be allowed to survive? Must we have the open or the closed shop? These and other questions are vitally related to the whole problem of industrial recovery and re-employment. We have therefore asked Mr. Matthew Wall, Vice President of the American Federation of Labor, an outstanding authority on unionization, and Mr. Ralph Robey, economist and instructor at Columbia University, to give us their views on the topic of this evening's meeting: Will unionization promote industrial recovery? I am happy to present at this time our first speaker, Mr. Matthew Wall, Vice President of the American Federation of Labor. Mr. Wall.
Mr. Chairman and friends, the question for discussion is: Will unionization promote industrial recovery? Unfortunately, the term "industry" as other terms is subject to a variety of definitions. In this presentation, I shall not limit its terms to those interests who today constitute in a large measure the ownership and management of the industrial activities of our national life. Instead, I intend to embrace the entire economic setup of the nation and its activity as a whole. What is true of the term "industry" applies with equal force to the term "unionization." It too is subject to a narrow as well as a broad interpretation. It will not be my purpose to discuss this subject upon a narrow or limited sphere. In this larger sense, unionization has promoted industry and the general welfare. Thus conceived, further unionization will continue to aid industry and promote the general well-being, and as well tend to conserve and advance the true principles of democracy, freedom, justice, and equality. First, let us look to the negative side of the question, that less or no unionization will aid industry and promote the well-being. What then has been and is the attitude of mind, and what are the ultimate objectives of those who would view unionization of workers as undesirable or as a public menace? I shall not claim for labor the possession of virtues not found in every other description or classification of groups or of individuals. I will not assert that wage earners individually or collectively have not earned. I have disregarded at times both the moral as well as the civil and legal codes. I do affirm, however, that with all our human frailties and shortcomings, as a class or as a group, individually or collectively, the workers' conduct and philosophy, both as citizens and workers, have equaled in high patriotic service and Christian order that attained or manifested by any other group or individual barring none. In addition, I challenge comparison between the attitude of mind, the activities and conduct of wage earners of America, and those of any other land. Thus analyzed, the unionization of America's wage earners has made for the security of our nation and the perpetuity of its democratic institutions. But what has been the attitude of those having been charged with the administration of the rights and prerogatives, the privileges and licenses accorded private industrial enterprise? No industrial country in the world has permitted and encouraged its industries to acquire such vast corporate powers. No nation in the world has permitted like corporate powers being used to make such open, relentless, and destructive war upon the unions and the collective rights of workers. No country in the world has permitted great corporate industries to unite into still larger and stronger combinations or associations, trade or otherwise, for the purpose of preventing their employees from organizing into unions, to resist the encroachments of these great corporate grants of power. These great corporate industries and strong employers' associations with huge resources at their disposal have fought unions and union activities in the courts, and have opposed almost every piece of social legislation in Congress and the several state legislative bodies. And all of this to what end? For the purpose of preventing wage earners from organizing in unions so that they may be able to demand their right to collective bargaining... collective bargaining. Why are wage earners insisting upon the right to union membership and the right to choose their own representatives for collective bargaining? Because as individuals, they are helpless to bargain with the employer on wages, hours, and conditions of work. Unless there can be bargaining on these matters, they represent only what the employer wants to give with no consideration of what the worker thinks he ought to have. Representation in determining the terms of the work contract is a right which reaches to the roots of American ideals of justice and freedom. Faced with stubborn resistance, if not a ruthless and reckless denial of their collective rights and opportunities in bargaining and contracting for standards of employment and conditions of work, confronted with an organized opposition tantamount to a private economic or industrial dictatorship, there are an ever-increasing number of workers who have lost faith in the pr-
Big news! Wayfair's end-of-season sale is here. It's Wayfair's Labor Day clearance. Right now, you can score up to seventy percent off everything home at Wayfair, plus amazing doorbuster deals and 24-hour surprise flash deals on home finds in every style. This is your last chance to score end-of-season savings, and it's happening now. Did we mention fast shipping on everything? Don't we? Head to wayfair.com today to score up to seventy percent off now through September 2nd.
Lowe's knows that no matter your paint project, saving is at the top of your list. That's why when you shop today, you can buy one, get one free. Select Valspar and HGTV Home by Sherwin-Williams. One-coat coverage interior paints via rebate. Shop these deals in-store or online today at Lowe's. We help, you save. Selection varies by location while supplies last. Discount taken at time of purchase. See sales associate for details. Offer valid 8/21-9/3.
...of pure democracy, and who would turn to governmental methods and to political power for the attainment of these objectives. Thus far, the American worker has held fast to the conception of private enterprise. He has clung to his faith in voluntary collective efforts in our social, religious, and economic fields. He knows that with freedom to organize, there is always at work a temporizing force between right and wrong. He knows too that with freedom for political expression and action, there is always a modifying influence upon government. But deny the wage earners that collective freedom, essential to their well-being, and you will destroy the very basis upon which the faith of the great mass of our people is founded, and thus you will have destroyed the cornerstone of democracy, of justice, and of equality. It does seem that proprietors and managers of private enterprise, of corporate industry, should be aware that a policy of restriction and denial, of oppression, injustice, and inequality cannot be perpetuated by any self-constructed theory and practice of private economics, no matter how well-sounding, and that sooner or later, such a procedure must result in a revolt of the masses. After a generation of conflict, it cannot be said that any definite progress has been made toward the establishment of an equitable American labor policy. There are still those who hold that competition in labor must reign freely. While they would accept a minimum living wage and some restraint upon working hours as a social requirement, they would demand that in all labor negotiations and relationships, there should be an unrestrained freedom of choice on the part of management in all matters dealing with the employment contract. What is to be feared in unionization? Just what will unionization result in? The first result of unionization is to effect standardization of wages, hours, and working conditions within a trade calling our industry. This means that the less efficient plants, tempted to compensate for high costs due to their inefficiency by lowering labor standards, are not permitted to do so. It also means that the more efficient plants, unable to increase their profits by attaxing labor standards, are compelled to increase them by more efficiency in either branch of management or production or both. Second, unionization will enable labor to cooperate with management in the effort to increase efficiency without fear of having its standards lowered as the indirect result of the technical revolutions constantly taking place. Thus, unionization will promote rather than retard development of efficiency in industry and without interfering with reasonable profits. Then two, morale of the production force is an inestimable asset in all industries. Morale rests upon goodwill, confidence in getting a square deal, security. In those plans where workers have the right to representation of their own choosing, collective bargaining through union agents, permanent mutual channels for adjusting grievances, and the machinery for cooperation between the union and management in the problems of production, the best conditions are provided for development and maintenance of the best morale in production force. The establishment of the right to representation through agents of their own choosing for the purpose of collective bargaining is the primary step in lifting relations between workers and management from the plane of arbitrary force and conflict to the plane of conference and decision upon the basis of fact. Conference method, necessities argument, convincing assembly of sustaining data, mutual consideration of present and long-time interests of the group's concerns, the conference and collective agreement strengthen the forces of intelligence, the practice of trying to find mutually acceptable solutions of problems, the practice and outlook of mutuality. Labor maintains that industry is short-sighted in opposing the desire of workers for union membership so that they can insist effectively on a fairer distribution of income from the products and sciences which they help to produce. Industry must have a market for its products. It gauges its opportunities for production by the capacity of consumers to buy or to utilize the consumers' and services' goods on the market. If wage earners can buy shirts, shoes, bread, pay for dental services, keep up repairs on homes, etc., then the professions, baker, soup factories, textile industry, and the producers of these industries can maintain production. The delicate interrelations within our economic structure make serious the development of unbalance in any relationship. If the textile industry in the South underpays its operatives, the retail business of their communities find its trade cut down. If the building trades of any community are idle for a long time, they cannot buy what they want, and the industries that feed the retail merchants slacken. The union movement has been the standard-making force both in raising wage rates and reducing hours. Within the past fifty years, there has been a very substantial reduction in the work week. Fifty years ago, the sixty- and seventy-hour week was generally accepted, while now, labor urges forty hours as the maximum and thirty hours as the desirable standard. What would have happened in industry if the union had not been there as the militant outpost, insisting upon shorter hours, as technical processes changed and the number of machine operatives steadily increased, and hand skills gave way to skills in operating highly specialized machines providing the tools of interchangeable parts? Industry would have increased its production costs by keeping workers overlong on repetitive processes, and a large army of unemployed would have been created quickly. As a civilized nation cannot look upon large groups close at hand starving, the producing groups have to support the unemployed. The union has rendered an inestimable service in maintaining our standards which industries have approached more or less closely. As the number of industries and their output have steadily mounted, there had to be increasing numbers of families and individuals with income and leisure, enabling them to have higher material standards of living. We grew boastful of our American standard of living with its wide distribution of bathtub, automobiles, radios, and silk stockings through trade union leadership in raising standards of actual buying power of wage earners, increasing from $21.80 a week in 1881 to $34.75 in 1929. In this same period, union leadership reduced the work week and increased its leisure hours per week by fifteen hours. In a highly interdependent national market, leaving aside the world market, there must be balance between production and consumption. Cooperation with the organized labor movement is the only alternative which can save our present industrial organization from arbitrary governmental regulation or revolution. The cornerstone which present rulers of industry are rejecting is the key to an enduring and beneficent industrial structure which could well serve all citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. In these highly controversial subjects, there are always at least two sides to the question. We now hear another side presented by Mr. Ralph Robey, lecturer in economics at Columbia University. Mr. Robey.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Wall, ladies and gentlemen. The contention that unionization of labor would promote industrial recovery must rest, it seems to me, upon one or both of two closely related convictions. The first is the conviction that labor leaders, on the average, are more foresighted, more unselfish, and more socially minded than the rank and file of the present managers of business. The second is the conviction that the policies which would be dictated by labor, if it were in a position of dominance, would confer greater benefits upon society as a whole than the policies which have been followed heretofore. Mr. Wall, in his discussion this evening, has reflected both of these convictions. His principal emphasis, however, has been upon the second, that is, upon the thought that the policies labor would enforce, if it had the power to do so, would be better for mankind than the policies we have been following. In my discussion, I shall follow this lead of Mr. Wall and also place main emphasis upon the question of policies. First, however, I should like to say that my stressing of economic policies does not mean that I underestimate the importance of the personal element in the problem of the relation of labor to industrial recovery. I think as a matter of fact that the personal element is of the utmost importance. But I also think that it does not lend itself to impartial analysis. None of us can prove, for example, either statistically, logically, or historically, that labor leaders as a class are more unselfish than business leaders as a class, or that business leaders are more foresighted than labor leaders. All of us could name both labor leaders and business leaders that leave something to be desired from the point of view of foresightedness. And all of us could name both labor leaders and business leaders that would put most of us to shame from the point of view of unselfishness and willingness to work for the general welfare. But such citations would prove nothing and would convince no one. The net conclusion of each of us as to which is the superior group of leaders would still rest upon his own particular prejudices and his own particular economic philosophy. If this is true, there is little point in spending time upon the personal aspect of our problem. I turn then to the question of the economic policies involved. Paramount among these policies, and mentioned by Mr. Wall, is the proposal that labor should have a larger income. In the minds of some of those offering this suggestion, this proposal means apparently merely that labor should have higher wages, should get more dollars in its weekly pay envelope. To others, the proposal means that labor should have a larger share of the total national income, that is, that it should be given greater real wages or a greater ability to purchase commodities. The former of these, that labor should receive a larger dollar income, offers no difficulty of analysis. As a means of helping labor or as a means of promoting industrial recovery, it has nothing to offer. The dollar income of labor is important only in relation to the cost of the things for which it must be spent. In a period of rising prices, the standard of living of labor may be forced lower and lower in spite of rising wages. It all depends upon the relative rapidity with which prices and wages advance. In other words, the important thing about wages from the point of view of labor is not the number of dollars in the pay envelope, but the purchasing power and the debt-paying power of those dollars. The second of the interpretations assigned to the proposal that labor should have a larger income, that is, the thought that labor should have a greater share of the total national income, is not so simple. The argument underlying this suggestion takes various forms. Generally, however, it is presented as a means of preventing the growth of production from outstripping the growth of consumption. Thus, it is maintained that as a result of too large a share of the national income being paid out in the form of dividends, there is not enough left in the hands of wage earners to purchase the goods produced. For a while, it is said, we may offset this disequilibrium between the volume of production and the volume of consuming power by the extension of credit or by the sale of commodities on installments. But this, it is held, offers only a temporary stopgap. Sooner or later, a collapse is inevitable, and that the only method to prevent the recurrence of periods of depression is to pay out a larger and larger share of the national income to consumers through labor. It is not difficult to understand the appeal of this line of reasoning. At first glance, it sounds reasonable, but it is not true. It involves one basic defect, and a defect that destroys completely not only the conclusion but the whole argument. This defect is the assumption that only that portion of our national income which is paid out as wages is used for the purchase of goods. Quite obviously, this is not the case. The corporation president who receives $100,000 a year does not bury the $100,000 in his backyard. The recipient of a dividend check does not cash it and put the proceeds in his bed mattress. The earnings which a corporation retains are not locked up in its vaults. In every case, the money is spent. It may not be spent as quickly as it would be if it were in the hands of a day labor, and it may not be spent for the same things, but the fact remains that it is spent. It comes into the market and buys commodities and services just as truly as does the wage of a labor. If one is to defend the contention that labor should have a larger share of the total national income, therefore, it must be on some grounds other than that this would prevent a discrepancy between production and consuming power, and hence prevent recurring depressions. Specifically, as I see it, the defense must rest on the ground that money spent by labor would be better directed from the point of view of maintaining business stability than money spent by others. Perhaps over a long period, over a generation, or over a century, this would be true. I do not know, and I do not believe that anyone else knows or can know, for I do not believe that anyone is capable of forecasting the effects of economic policies for such a long period in advance. From the short-term point of view, our conclusion can be more dogmatic. We can be reasonably sure that such a policy would not be of direct help in solving at least one of the more difficult problems of this depression. That is, the problem of unemployment. For were a larger share of the present national income paid out in wages, it would be spent for the most part in the purchase of consumption goods. Since the vast bulk of the present unemployment is not in the industries producing these goods, but rather is in the so-called heavy industries, the present volume of unemployment would tend to be perpetuated. It would tend to be perpetuated until the increased demand for consumption goods caused the consumption industries to increase their labor forces by money million. There is no reason to believe that such an increase could take place in the lifetime of most of those who at present are out of work. Such then, in brief, is my analysis of the proposal, that as a means of promoting industrial recovery, labor should receive a larger share of the national income. The analysis does not indicate, let me emphasize, that I like the present distribution of the national income. I emphatically do not like. I dislike having such a large portion of it concentrated in a few hands. I dislike having such a small proportion of it going to those millions of our citizens who through no shortcoming of their own are scarcely able to keep body and soul together. And I dislike, and I dislike intensely, having the government cut the heart out of the purchasing power of the wages of our lower-income group through putting indirect taxes on the necessities of life. All of this, I think, should be corrected, and should be corrected at once. But the correction should be undertaken, not as a means of promoting industrial recovery But the correction should be undertaken, not as a means of promoting industrial recovery, but as a means of getting a greater degree of social justice in our economic system. A second economic policy that frequently is offered by labor as a means of promoting industrial recovery is the arbitrary restriction of the hours of work. Thirty hours a week is the figure most commonly mentioned. In part, this is merely a plan for increasing the proportion of the national income going to labor. As such, it has been covered in the preceding analysis. There is, however, a second aspect to this proposal. This is the thought that such a shortening of the hours of labor would spread work and thereby reduce unemployment. This aspect, it seems to me, deserves spatial attention.
Mr. Robey, I'm sorry to interrupt at this time, but other stations are joining us at this point. This program is coming to you from Town Hall, New York.[661.13][661.13][music] Back in historic Town Hall in New York for a continuation of America's Town Meeting of the Air. The subject for discussion tonight is, will unionization promote industrial recovery? Our speaker at the moment is Mr. Ralph Robey, instructor in banking at Columbia University, who will now continue.
This proposal for shortening of hours deserves spatial attention because the spreading of work is not in and of itself an aid to business recovery. Business activity is not a function of the number of people receiving pay envelopes. It is a function of the amount of the pay in those envelopes, plus the other income of the country in relation to the amount of production. We do not create prosperity by putting our workers on half-time and increasing the number of workers by one hundred percent. Such a process merely means that labor is having to bear the cost of unemployment instead of having the cost borne by society as a whole in proportion to its ability to pay. I recognize, of course, that the reduction of hours proposal ordinarily is combined with the provision that there is to be no cutting of wages, that the labor is to get as much for thirty hours as he has been getting for, say, forty-eight hours, and consequently that the proposal is not thought of as just putting men on part-time. But remember, and for this I think you should be thankful, we no longer have an NRA. Consequently, there is no assurance [applause]. Consequently, there is no assurance that wage scales would be maintained. It is quite possible, therefore, that should this proposal be put into effect, not only would it fail to be of aid to recovery, but it would directly undermine the wages of those at present employed. In the few minutes that remain to me, there is just one more point that I should like to make. This involves the question of the closed shop, and in a sense, it is the heart of the whole problem we have been discussing. For quite clearly, the question, will unionization promote industrial recovery, is not concerned with getting a few thousand more people into our unions. The issue involved is whether industrial recovery would be helped or hindered by placing labor in a sufficiently strong position to enable it to force its views and policies upon the present managers of business. Theoretically, labor might attain such a position without the closed shop. Practically, we know that under present conditions, this is not possible. The whole question of whether unionization would promote recovery, therefore, becomes a question of the closed shop, and those who defend unionization as a means of promoting recovery must be prepared to defend the closed shop. I wish that I might discuss this aspect of our issue in some detail. Limitation of time makes this impossible. All I can do is to state a dogmatic conclusion. This conclusion is that I do not believe any group, and I do not care whether the group is composed of millionaires or day laborers. I do not believe that any group should be permitted to get into a position where, as a result of its monopolistic power, it can dictate to and take advantage of other sections of the population. I believe [applause]. I believe that the individual labor does not have equality of bargaining power with a large employer, and consequently that labor unions are desirable and necessary. But I do not believe that the closed shop or any other monopoly will promote industrial recovery in this country.
Thank you, Mr. Robey. Well, now we've heard two doctors disagree. What's the verdict? Well, we'll have our questions next. Will you arise and state the person to whom your question is directed and limit your question to twenty-five words? Questions, not speeches. Let's have them. Questions, please. Falcone, yes?
I'd like to ask if the President, on the University of the NRA...
Mr. Robey!
...did not attempt and did not actually achieve a degree of success in distributing the national income, and if not, what would you suggest doing about it?
Didn't the NRA achieve a measure of success of distributing the national income, and if not, what would you suggest doing about it? Robey?
Mr. Moderator, I thought I was supposed to be limited to two minutes in limiting of questions. That I can't do in two minutes. Yes, I think the NRA redistributed income and redistributed it in such a way that we had all kinds of new disequilibria within our economic system.[1013.13][1013.13][laughter] Now, as to how I would distribute it, we have a good many expenses in this country that have to be met. Expenses of the government, expenses of taking care of those that have to be taken care of. I would see that those expenses are met by a tax system which rests upon ability to pay and not upon how will it least affect votes, as at present.[1044.58][1044.58][applause]
Thank you, Mr. Robey. The written question added in. Mr. Wall, isn't it time for the workers to form a real American labor party to seek by legislation and not by strike its aim?[1061.33][1061.33][applause]
The question of a formation of a distinctive labor party in America is a subject that has received the attention of the labor organizations for many years. Thus far, organized labor of America has reached the conclusion that it is inadvisable to form a distinctive labor party, and for a number of reasons, I can only refer to a few of them. Time will not permit of an extensive presentation. First of all, we have here a continental country of forty-eight sovereign states, a national government which is a federation rather than organic national body, a government that is controlled by constitution, in which the powers are divided into three parts, each designed as a check one upon the other. Therefore, labor in America has realized the difficult task of seeking to accomplish economic redress, advancement, and protection through forms of legislation. The long history of organized labor has demonstrated that even after years of struggle in securing certain legislative enactments in states, or even in our national government, we may find within a short time thereafter that such legislation is enjoined by our courts and ultimately held to be invalid as being in violation of constitutional authority vested in our parliamentary or legislative bodies. Hence, labor has found that there is but one safe course, one certain course to follow, and that is to obtain these standards by economic power which cannot be taken away by the Court Supreme or otherwise. Secondly, the country itself is largely agricultural in character. The states that are industrial in character and where the industrial workers might politically use some influence are comparatively few. Our whole national organization is controlled in the main by the agricultural interests, and until such time that we find the agricultural interest of the conception, of the understanding and willingness to unite with labor politically, until that time, any effort on the part of labor would fail. Lastly, labor is interested and does exercise its political power, but it exercises it upon a nonpartisan basis, and it has found that when it solicits the membership of the wage earners, it does not ask them whether they belong to the Democratic, Republican, or socialist party. If we attempted to organize labor upon that basis, there would be still greater difficulty in making any progress in having the unorganized assembled into unions. These are but a few of the reasons that have induced labor thus far not to formulate a distinctive labor party.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.[1266.83][1266.83][applause] Mr. Robey?
Mr. Robey, you took the position that, uh...
Question?
If labor received a greater portion of the national income, it would not be conducive to a restoration of prosperity. Do you feel that the President's bill, the taxing of the surplus, corporation surpluses, will that bring about a restoration of prosperity?
Mr. Robey, do you think that the President's bill to tax the corporation surplus will bring about recovery? I don't know that that question's in order, labor. That's not the subject we are discussing this evening. We're discussing, will unionization promote industrial recovery? Next question. Yeah. Your question.
Mr. Matthew Wall.
To Mr. Wall, yes?
In the last few weeks, we've heard a great deal...
Question?
Are you in favor of the former labor party, as some of the leaders of the American Federation of Labor and some locals and some national industries have come forward to?
Yes, thank you. Are you in favor of the former labor party, Mr. Wall?[1341.83][1341.83][applause]
I have already answered that question, and I say we are not in favor of distinctive labor party, despite the fact that there are some groups who do favor it.
Next question, Mr. Hubbard. I hear.
Mr. Robey.
Mr. Robey.
Does all of the corporation presidents' hundred thousand-dollar salary go back into circulation, or does a substantial part of it go into channels where it's relatively inactive, for example, into unused capital plant or into gold or currency hoarding?
I think that from time to time, we do have a part of the national income withdrawn from economic use. Economic use in the sense that it results in the purchase of goods. Perhaps the best example, and the most extensive example recently, was in the inflation, stock market inflation before nineteen twenty-nine. I have no idea how much money was used there, but I would be willing to bet that for every dollar of salaries and dividends that went into the market, our bank just out of thin air wrote up at least two dollars and put it into the economic system, so that there was no loss.
Next question.
Mr. Wall.
Mr. Wall.
Do you think, Mr. Wall, that the time is coming when unionization would be better organized on the industrial form?[1429.64][1429.64][applause]
What about unionization on the industrial form?
The American labor movement has not decreed any particular form that wage earners should follow in organizing, whether that be upon the craft basis or whether it be upon an industrial basis or any other form. I know there is a great deal of discussion in the public press and some questioning the counsel of the American Federation of Labor upon the issue of craft unionism as against industrial unionism. I want to assure those not familiar with the affairs of the American Federation of Labor that the issue is not that. It is only a question as to the best method of organizing the unorganized in the mass production industries. It is true that there is a division of opinion as to which form is best and most desirable. The American labor movement, however, has not attempted or does not dictate that form of organization that should govern. We have found by experience that in some occupations it is better that the wage earners are organized by their trade or by their occupation rather than by the industry. In other instances, it has been found to organize them all upon one industrial plant is the more efficient, the more satisfactory form. Again, we have found that it is desirable that a number of crafts associate themselves in groups for the purpose of acting collectively in a semi-industrial manner. I mention these forms merely to indicate that the American labor movement does not conform to any fixed plan, that it adopts the industrial as well as the plant, as well as the craft plant in organization.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Question? Yes? To Mr. Wall. To Mr. Wall.
If workers are to have the right of joining a union, what should be the attitude of the radio audience towards Orbach, which fires workers for joining a union?
What's that?[1572.83][1572.83][music]
Should I ask for me? The person who says workers are to have the right of joining a union?
Never mind, that's out. All right, down here. Down here, panel with Adam Scott, yes?
Uh, this question is addressed to Mr. Wall.
Mr. Wall?
Are you familiar enough with political economy and history to realize...
I'd like to raise a question.
To realize that the strength of organized labor in Germany and in Italy is what really caused the dictatorships there?
The strength of organized labor in Germany caused the dictatorships there. Mr. Wall, what do you think about that?
The strength of the German trade union movement made for the establishment of the Republic of Germany.[1636.01][1636.01][applause] I dare say that it was the influence of communism which gave ground for the development of Nazism, and that it was destruction of the liberties of the German wage workers.[1652.14][1652.14][applause]
While you're here, here's a question from... Here's a question from a man out in Manuka, Illinois. Mr. Charles Sherrill, ought not labor unions to be incorporated so that they can be held responsible in case they inflict damage?[1670.01][1670.01][applause]
The proponent of this question apparently has no knowledge of the legal liability of trade unions as a voluntary, unincorporated body. A trade union as a voluntary body before the law stands in the relationship of a partnership in which each individual member is responsible without liability for that which the group may be responsible for or benefit by through its collective actions. It might be advantageous for labor to incorporate, to take advantage of some of the incorporation laws we have, because incorporation limits and restricts individual liability. Labor, however, is not inclined to take advantage of the incorporation acts, because the moment it does so, it places itself in the position of a licensee from the state to carry on its individual and collective activities. It believes as freemen that we have the right to unite collectively for mutual improvement and self-advancement without requiring license of the state to do so. And being required to have license will also mean that government will control the activities of organized labor. We feel that that is unwarranted, and should it ever come that incorporation would be required by law for trade unions to exist and to operate, we would then have taken the first step towards the establishment of fascism and Nazism.[1784.01][1784.01][applause]
Next question, again.
To Mr. Wall.
Oh, Mr. Wall again.
In the name of our great flag, would it not be to a great advantage throughout the United States if laws were in... United States if laws were enforced to minimize the wage scale and the maximum wage scale, and to minimize the cost of commodity, so big monopolies cannot take the advantage by increasing the prices so that they gain the benefit of the monopoly?
Do you understand that question, Mr. Wall?
I don't understand the question when he speaks of minimizing the scales and wages.
Minimizing the commodity and minimizing labor. The price of commodity and minimizing labor.
I don't understand what you mean by minimizing the price and minimizing wages.
Minimizing the standard of wages and lowering the standard of the commodity would not reach the advantage of public.
I'm sure that is a very clear question. Mr. Wall, I'm going to ask you another question that's been added in in writing while you're here. Why should the income tax payments of labor union officials or labor unions be made public like it is done with corporations?
I do not know that there is any restriction upon the national government of making known the income of labor officials as it is of the officials of industrial enterprises or of any other undertaking. My understanding is that we are in the same category as every other individual with reference to income, and that the national government is at liberty to make known, and certainly I see no objection to it.
Now, the young lady in the balcony, then. Yes?
To Mr. Wall.
To Mr. Wall.
What is your attitude towards the fact that the workers might turn from this private enterprise system toward a system where industry is government-controlled?
What do you feel about labor turning toward government-controlled industry?
Organized labor is hopeful that that day may be avoided. For if industry is controlled by state, all those engaged by industry will likewise be controlled by state, and that is exactly what we have in Italy, in Germany, and in Russia.
Now, who has a question for Mr. Robey? Gentlemen, back there. Mr. Robey. Mr. Robey.
Granted that the executive spends most of his hundred thousand dollar income, does not a part of this income go to a host of domestics who are not increasing the national wealth in any respect?
He wants to know a little more about that executive spending his hundred dollar amount.
I don't know, I do not know upon what basis you say that domestic service does not increase our wealth. Does a lawyer increase our wealth? Because after all, it's a question of giving some kind of service as contrast with producing corn or automobiles. I should say that they're all apart and very definitely a part of our stance of living. And I think that if you attempted to take the wages away from all of our domestic services, you'd find that there are several people that wouldn't like the idea at all.
Mr. Robey, while you're on your feet, here's another question that's been added in for you. Are you in favor of strikes, the only weapon that labor has?
When labor is unable to get any kind of consideration from its employers, when we have an employer who is unwilling to meet labor and talk over their problems, and by talking over their problems, I don't mean give orders to labor, to meet them halfway, then I think that labor has no alternative but to strike. But that does not mean that the strike must be used as a monopolistic weapon. Of course, I believe in strikes. Everyone who has any sympathy with labor believes in strikes. And I also believe that the capitalist itself, capitalist himself, has certain rights, and I object to either one of them, using those rights to the disadvantage, inconvenience, needless inconvenience of the rest of us.
Thank you, Mr. Robey. Next question. Yes? To who? Mr. Wall. Mr. Wall.
May I ask just what it is that you fear in incorporation, since the experience is that the corporations are getting away with murder anyhow?
That's what you fear about incorporation. The gentleman thinks the corporations are getting away with murder.
Although I made that clear, that if trade unions were required to be incorporated as a condition of operating, it would place collective action upon the wage earners upon the faces of a license rather than a right, and placed in that, the conception of freedom of action would be destroyed, and labor is not prepared yet to enslave itself to the state.
Thank you. Our question to Mr. Matt way back in the south. To Mr. Robey.
Mr. Robey says that the dictatorship of labor over capital. I don't know, I believe Mr. Robey agrees that capital has a dictatorship over labor today. Now, which is a lesser evil, which does he prefer, or how can he make a more equitable distribution of power?
Well, Mr. Robey just said he didn't believe in the dictatorship of either one. Let's take the next question. Right down here, Ms. Powers. Yes?
To Mr. Wall.
To Mr. Wall, yes?
Do you know of an industry where collective bargaining negotiated an agreement where the employees received an average of over seventy dollars a week, and they went through depression without any decrease in wages, and that the union took the out-of-work men and cared for themselves, that government helped?
Mr. Wall, you get that?
Yes, I'm very well familiar with the industry in question, and it indicates what unionism means. In the particular industry referred to, those employed cared for the unemployed to the extent of providing for the last five years an income of twenty to twenty-five dollars a week to every member unemployed, and those working assessed themselves as high as twelve dollars a week in order to maintain that, indicating clearly that unionism tends to maintain standards, both for the employer and the worker, and share conditions of adversity as well as times of prosperity.
Next question.
Mr. Wall.
Mr. Wall.
Would not American labor be better off if were to imitate the former German labor movement by taking in all workers and presenting a common front against capital, instead of creating potential strike-breakers through restricting membership?
Mr. Wall, would you be better off imitating the German system?
Apparently, the gentleman is not familiar with the German trade union movement as it was founded and operated prior to the Hitler regime. The German labor movement followed exactly the policy and the principles of the American Federation of Labor. It is true that it ventured further into political action, and did to a degree have a distinctive labor party, but in its economic work, in its membership, in its form of operation, in its strategy, it was akin and alike to that followed by American organized labor. Hence, the assumption upon which your question is founded is not true and is invalid.
The lady here.
Mr. Wall, you state that the American Federation of Labor does not discriminate against any workers according to political views. Well, why were the fur workers expelled from American Federation of Labor in nineteen twenty-nine?
Why were the fur workers expelled from American Federation of Labor in nineteen twenty-nine? We have half a minute, Mr. Wall.
When the Soviet regime undertook, well, if you don't want the question answered, say so. All right. When the Soviet regime came into power, one of its first declarations and one of its first undertakings was to formulate the Third Internationale with the specific objective of gaining control of the American trade unions and for the purpose of overthrowing the democracy in the United States. And when American labor opposed communism and communistic leadership in the American labor movement, it believed it supported the principles of democracy.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry we haven't time to continue this discussion tonight. We must get time to hear from Mr. Havela because he has a very important announcement to make about the future programs. Mr. Havela?
Before announcing the program for next week, let us tell you about another nationwide contest we are conducting in cooperation with a national peace conference representing thirty-three national peace organizations to bring a representative of the radio audience to this platform on May fourteenth. The meeting at that time will be on the subject, Peace and Party Platforms. What peace plank should the political parties include in their platforms when they are adopted this summer? We will bring the writer of the best letter of not more than one thousand words on this subject to New York to participate in this program on May fourteenth. Letter should be typewritten on one side of the paper and sent to the League for Political Education, one hundred and twenty-three West Forty-third Street, New York City, before May first, nineteen thirty-six. And now, next week at this hour, our subject will be, Does American Prosperity Depend on Foreign Trade? Speakers will be the Honorable James M. Curley, Governor of Massachusetts, and Eugene P. Thomas, President of the National Foreign Trade Council. Copies of tonight's broadcasts and all other broadcasts on this series may be obtained at the nominal cost of ten cents. Write to the League for Political Education, the Town Hall, one hundred and twenty-three West Forty-third Street, New York City, one hundred and three West Forty-third Street, New York City.
Now, meeting next week. Now, meeting next week. Does American prosperity depend on foreign trade? Now, meeting next week. Now, meeting next week.
Correct amount of address, one hundred and twenty-three West Forty-third Street, New York City. This is the National Broadcasting Company.